God, I thought you didn't have a damn show on.
You can be outside and you can see inside, just like glass. I mean, you're looking in the shop.
Don't expect a lot out of Jeff. He can't tell shit from goats.
Mary Jean, is Wayne here tonight?
Yeah, he's normally here, but not.
I haven't heard anything coming.
You know, I'm glad we're not voting on something that needs two-thirds approval. Bob's here. Bob can sit in.
There you go.
We've got five. That's all we have to hand.
Yeah, for us.
Yeah, for us.
Five's enough.
Okay. Hey, let's go ahead and get started. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for coming. I think you're going to be pleasantly surprised tonight. We're going to be out of here so quick.
I love you.
I know. I mean, really, for all year, it's been two-hour meetings, and I think tonight we're going to, it's going to make up for some of that, so.
You realize that Bob's here?
Wait a minute. Excuse me, we have a time limit on Bob tonight.
With that said, I'd like to call the
Bob, three minutes.
Wow.
I'd like to call the meeting to order tonight, and we have a guest prayer man. I called him pastor when I walked in, but Jim Fitzgerald is going to pray for us.
Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for so many things in our lives, for life itself, Father. Lord, we're thankful for the blessing of living in a country like the United States where we have the freedoms that so many have sacrificed for, and we thank you for that. Father, we're thankful for this city, for the city of Harrison, and, Father, it is home to so many, and it is our home, and we are appreciative of that. We thank you for everything that's being done here. Father, I ask that you be with those who lead our city. Be with them, Lord, as they discuss the business that needs to be done, as they, as they vote, as they make the decisions. We just ask you for your guidance. We ask you for wisdom and knowledge, and, and, Father, we ask you for clear understanding, and, and, Father, and we ask you for direction. Be with these men and women as they, as they go about your bidding this evening, and we ask, Lord, that you bless them. Father, again, we're saying, so thankful for so much, and we're especially thankful for your son, and it's through him we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please be seated. All right. Joel, you have anything tonight?
Not tonight.
All right. Luke, are you taking care of?
Luke's going to present the pay grid, but Mitch apologizes because he could not be here tonight. He called me earlier.
All right, let me go up here real quick. I did put out a draft budget out on the Google Docs, so take a peek at that, ask as many questions as you would like. I'd love to answer them. We are still reviewing it. Jerry and I are. We're going through it. I found some stuff the other night, so we're going to try to get that wrapped up. We still can't actually finalize it anyways right now because we don't have health insurance numbers yet, I believe. We are told that October 24th now. They promised us early October, and I guess early is now October 24th. So hopefully, once we get that, we'll have a finalized number there. I also wanted to kind of show you this. I put this in front of you. This is, I know it's kind of hard to read a little bit, but we've done our salary budgets a little bit different this year. We took out all the names, so they're, they're just positions now and what they are budgeted for. You will notice that some of them, that one that's highlighted that you'll see there, we did split some of our payroll line items. So there's, I believe, one that's split three ways, and then two other people that will be split two ways, just because they actually work in those, or each department. So that is split out a little bit different than what you'll see in years past. But what I really have here for you tonight is the fire pay grid. If we can go ahead and kind of go to that part of it. We are going to have to change that pay grid. I wanted to get this in front of you to discuss. We're going to have to do something. The minimum wage right now is going to $10 on January 1st, and currently, the, while the firefighter first position makes $33,000, with the number of hours they work, it puts them in a minimum wage crunch there that we need to get that updated. So we will need to do something. This is a proposed pay grid here. We tried to just do $1,600 with everybody and just move everybody up, so that way it would just be the $1,600 flat dollar amount. Unfortunately, that didn't work with the percentage increases that we had for each pay grid. It would have changed that percentage to be something different on each step, so we could not do that. So I, I kind of came up with a, what I, I tried to do something very similar to what we did whenever we actually established the pay grid, and make sure that each step from firefighter to engineer, lieutenant, captain, battalion chief, division chief, and regular chief, that you would still be making more than the last step on the grid. So that's there for your, I guess, consideration, and that's kind of the numbers that I used for the, the budget that you'll see. I gave, I printed it off for Mary Jean and then Joel, and I also put it out there for you all to look at on Google Docs. If you want a, if anybody else wants a printed copy, I can do that. But if you guys have any questions, it's more, let's, let's ask some questions, talk about it a little bit, see what we need to do as far as getting this passed, so that way we can finalize it. I know you guys are, I think I put it out there maybe early this week or late last week, what was actually present, what was actually proposed, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them. It's about a 6% increase across the board, for the most part. There's going to be some that are going to be a little higher, but.
That's a fire company.
That's a fire company, yes.
And you're good with it, Chief?
Yeah, I mean, we have to, we're going to have to talk about this quite a bit, and, you know, we, we didn't, we didn't want to just start the minimum and fix everything.
Right.
We've seen, Lynn and I both seen that in the past, where I have this sense that's what comes up and causes problems.
It's going to have to change again next year.
Yes.
So January 2021, the minimum wage goes up to $11 an hour. So we will be changing it again.
Next year.
Next year, yeah. So we'll, we'll kind of get started on this a little bit quicker for next year, so that way it's out there. Still probably will be, I would propose it going into effect January 1. It's a little cleaner that way, but if you all tell me different, I can do it differently. It's just, I wanted to make sure that we got it.
It has to go into effect January 1.
Something does, yes. And, and that's, again, I tried to tailor it after what we did when we actually implemented the grids. So it's, it's very, very similar. You, you see that the last number there on, on the 10 spot or the 7 spot, it rolls into kind of the next $1,000 amount, and that's kind of what we did with the last one.
And what was Mitch's intake on this?
He understood. He, he's, he's still reviewing the grid, but he understands that we're going to have to do something for it.
A judgment.
Yeah, we're, we're going to have to make some adjustments to it, so he looked at it and said, you know, it looks okay, but we're, he wanted to kind of study it a little bit more, too, I think, but I think we could have that discussion with him, too, at council, and he'd be very happy with it.
Do we need to just go ahead and take this to council then?
And I would say if you have any discussion tonight, we could discuss, but yes, I would propose that we take it to council tonight, just for, it could be voted on. We can discuss it again at council. I have no problem with that.
I do. I've, I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Take, take the fire part and set it aside.
Sure.
Okay. What about the rest of our city employees, police, plus all the others, about the minimum wage stuff? Because it's going to affect everything. The water and sewer guys work well over 40 hours a week on a regular basis, depending on time of year. So how much more is this going to affect us? And how much more correction are we going to have to do to a $10 an hour minimum?
Nothing. I mean, if you're trying to get people above the $10, everybody else is above right now. Everybody else is above that $10 an hour mark. I think Wade might, I don't remember what a 12A is. It might be on that sheet, actually. 12B is, let me calculate real quick.
Yeah, what is the average hours? Is it 54 hours or 56 or 55?
What about police?
They're doing 40, normally 40 hours a week, and the way the 24-hour shift rolls per week is it puts you into the 50-some hour per week.
Sure. Go to 24 hours on.
So it's, I think, 12A is about, is about $12.43. I believe that's our lowest in public works right now.
As of now, right?
As of right now, yes. I mean, I understand everything goes up. I mean, in theory, everybody would go up, but.
So in theory, this is the only, only budgetary item in regards to pay that does not meet the minimum wage January 1?
Aside from parks.
Okay.
There, there are temporary people, yes.
Well, after you discuss this in depth with Mitch, I think we should go ahead and take it to council because you have to have it in effect by January 1.
We, we would, and I wanted to get, kind of talk about it tonight. I know we don't have to vote on it tonight. I'd like to vote to take it to council, at least so we could discuss it at council. We wouldn't have to necessarily vote on it the next council, but we just push off the, the budget, and we can do that. I mean, typically, we, we approve the budget in November, but.
Yeah, we want to take all the time we need.
Yeah. But I move we go ahead and take it to council.
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, Gary.
Is there any other discussion you all would like to have? I know you're, some of you may just be seeing it. Some of you may be gotten on Google Docs to see it already, but you can give me a call throughout the week, or if you have any other questions right now, I'd be happy to entertain. If not, I look forward to hearing other discussions. Please look through your, your budgets over the next couple months. Any suggestions or questions you have, please reach out to me, and I'm sure I'll be going over with Jerry, and if something changes, in the meantime, I will send out another draft and notate the changes that have been made, so.
But you will have changes because this isn't going to be.
Well, that is already in a, I've already put those numbers in because we had to have something as far as a budget. For those, I couldn't, I knew and couldn't in good faith keep those numbers that we had going forward, so I went ahead and included those numbers in the budget. Now, it can change, and I can change those numbers pretty quick.
But is this, I, I thought I misunderstood. Is this include, this already takes them up to minimum wage?
That, that one, yes.
Okay, I had misunderstood. Okay, I thought you had to change it again. Okay.
Nope.
I got you.
I also included taking us up another level in our health insurance. So we're, we're right now in a, in a class two. We were in a class one at the beginning of the year. I'm taking us to a class three. There is a chance we go to a class four, which would also change and increase that. So we're not exactly sure what health insurance will do, but we hopefully will have something by the end of the month.
Are you still talking to insurance?
No.
Not really.
River companies?
Not, not for this year. This next year, it's just, it's, we had someone actually reach out to us, and at this point, there's just not a lot of time that we can get everybody because they also have to let other, like our, our private companies, like FedEx or whoever, Claridge may have already done enrollment, open enrollment now with, with some of their employees. I don't know if you have or not, but that's very possible that they've already done open enrollment, and we don't, we don't have anything to tell our employees of, hey, this is, this is what it is, to let them weigh that out.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Lord, it's going to talk to us for a short time to keep Jerry's agenda short tonight.
I think it's going to be fine. Bob, take all the time you want.
No, 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 I, I don't.
Oh, is not.
See?
You don't want me to go so recent.
What I would like to do is to take an opportunity, something that we intend to do at least biannually, and that's update the city council, this body, and the public on what's happening in the area of economic development. But Luke took the, oh, here it is. Here it is. All right. So this is the first of many. What you're seeing here is the result of about three to four months' worth of research, and I want to tell you that at least 50% of this information is not completely accurate. It's not because we've never tried to capture the information before. Some of this is factual and comes from data available to us, some of which, however, and I'll discuss that, is what we're able to find out and learn. So as we get.
Cross fingers. To the right?
To the right. There it is. Y Harrison and Boone County, and then we're going to cover the subjects that are, that are listed up here very quickly. But before we get into that, I want to show you, demonstrate to you what Harrison and Boone County are all about.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, you're going to have to.
Is this the video?
Yeah. It played long ago. It worked earlier.
Well, holy wow.
We'll, we'll make sure we get this, Bob. This is so good.
It is.
I'm sure a lot of you have already seen it, but it is so good.
But some have not. So I wanted to make sure it was available. Okay, Y Harrison and Boone County. What's happening over there? I'm not, I'm not in control.
He went ahead and took it away from him. He's got the real control.
He's got the, I'm.
He's got the trainer side, looking at the wheel.
And, and the first.
You're making it hard on you, Bob, and the time's ticking.
I'm sorry. Mary Jean, don't take this out on me. Take this out on the city clerk. Please.
Gwen's my witness. It worked long ago.
It did. All right. We'll just go ahead and skip it and go on down.
And then what'd you do to it?
Where did you and Gwen put it? Have you looked at it long ago?
At the scenic Buffalo River and strategically located in north central Arkansas, Harrison is home to a strong economic base with an unparalleled quality of life, offering education from preschool through four-year degrees, award-winning healthcare, ample business opportunities, and activities for the whole family. Harrison is bustling with possibilities for every phase of life, whether you're just starting out, ramping up, or winding down. Harrison has a place for you. There are many more opportunities than I think a lot of young professionals would imagine here in the Harrison area. There's a lot to do.
The quality of life here is just outstanding.
Our out-of-town guests are most impressed by how welcoming the community is.
You can walk up to a place and the first thing they do is smile and welcome you.
The agricultural side, we love that.
There are tremendous amenities.
They have an outstanding airport, access to Memphis and Dallas each day.
If adventure was accomplished, Harrison would be at the center.
It's surrounded by beautiful scenery.
I'm a really big outdoor enthusiast. We have world-class fishing. If you're a canoeer, kayaker, if you like to camp, hike.
So many places to go where you can make memories.
One of the reasons that we moved back is because we can see ourselves raising a family here.
I'm part of the school system, and what we find is that the amount of support to make sure that our kids have all the things that they need is incredible.
We have multiple seasons here, and our kids can do a lot of different activities.
We had a tournament at North Arkansas College. A lot of the people were coming in from New York, Chicago, and they're asking me, you know, I hear you're from Africa. How did they get you here of all places? And I'm like, you know, why not here?
Every, like, store, like, restaurant here is just fabulous.
There are plenty of opportunities for entrepreneurship.
Our economy is growing. We're adding jobs, and I love our city leadership with our Chamber of Commerce to draw more industry in here.
Just at the college, we train so many different professions. The jobs are plentiful.
The hospital, we know the doctors. The doctors know the patients.
We have all sorts of services that you don't have to drive hours to receive.
The people here care about one another.
There's something for just about everybody.
If I could say three words, I would say welcoming, friendly, and famine.
Giving?
Breathtaking.
Home. So if you're looking for a place to be surrounded by authentic hospitality, pure beauty, and you want the ultimate work-life balance.
Welcome home.
Welcome home.
Welcome home.
Welcome to Boone County.
Caribou Numbani. Welcome home.
You belong in Harrison, Arkansas.
So, as the last note said, this is a project of hashtag believe Boone County. It's co-chaired by Melissa Collins and Kim Genet, and this has been a work of passion and love over the last several months. We think it's great. A lot of details about it. We've got six and a half hours of B-roll footage. We can probably make 20 or 30 different three-minute videos if we want. Individual businesses and industries, because of the amount of footage, can take and build their own social media videos from this. It's a tremendous resource. We've had roughly 2,000 hits just on our website since Friday at 4:00 p.m., all on this, so we think it's great. I hope it's on the city's website. That was David's task on Monday morning. So here's our mission, and this is the new mission for the Chamber of Commerce. Bylaw revision last month, the membership changed the focus officially of the chamber to be recognized as the premier business organization that influences the economic and business development growth through leadership, education, and investor partnerships. That's important. We now have the charter to do what we're doing. So Y Harrison and Boone County, it's pretty simple. You all live here, and you know that, but there are a lot of folks who do not understand what goes in to make us a viable location for economic development. I'm not going to read the charts to you. You can leave them. They, they include an administration and a community that is focused on economic and business development, having North Ark here, having the Harrison Public School System and its award-winning programs here, 100% fiber optics at 10 gigs. There's only three communities in the state of Arkansas that can say that. Our fire code rating went from a three to a two. We've got a Level Two Trauma Center, and then when you look at all of the organizations that collaborate together, we've got it. So here's some data that's important, and you have a fact sheet in front of you that captures some of this. We've got very low unemployment, just like Dr. Esther said in the video. The jobs are plentiful. Well, they actually are. With 3.5% unemployment in Boone County as of July of this year, September 1, there were over 50 vacancies in only our prime businesses. If, if we could reach out and calculate the other vacancies, I would say probably close to 100. So the low unemployment gives us a great advantage. However, it does affect how we're able to grow and expand present business. Job creation, just since January 1, those that we can document, over 335 new jobs have been created since January 1, and there's the businesses that have created them.
Would you care to aim that mic better towards you? We've got you on Facebook Live, and as you get away, that mic won't pick you up.
Sorry. Apologize. I think it's important to look, these are not net new jobs. These are new jobs that have been created by businesses moving in and expanding their work here in Harrison and Boone County. That's a pretty amazing number, considering that we have not aggressively and proactively sought new business development. Prime businesses, prime businesses, of course, are those whose goods and services and products are typically delivered outside the boundaries of Boone County. Look at the expansions just since January. A headquarters complex, 3.3 million. Windstream, over a million dollars in their fiber optic development. Ritter, over 2 million in fiber optic development. A regional office that has spent over a million dollars in renovating its office complex here in the city limits. 7.3 million just on prime business expansions. Not anything new. New prospects. We have a new warehouse project, quarter of a million, another larger warehouse complex project at a million, a logistics terminal at a million, and two new build manufacturing complexes. These are all prospects, but they total 37 million, and that's only the ones that we know of. Main Street business, I think this is important because it's what drives the economy and the numbers. Look at the numbers of, that businesses have invested just in our community since January. That's an amazing, these are expansions. These are not new. They're just expansions. Look at the, the breadth and the, the types of Main Street businesses that are affected. New prospects, these are businesses that have moved to Harrison since January 1 and built, and in the case of the, of the last two, they are projected, both have closed on the property, one we hope to be able to groundbreak here before the end of October. $30 million in new investment that was not here January 1 of this year. Now, what I need to tell you is, just this week, I've learned of two more that, again, there's no way to research these because the county has no records of, you know, what do you build, and how much does it cost? The city's behind about 60 days in this, but you get some of these, and they're not traceable. The Arkansas Boys Ranch, now known as the Arkansas Children's Ministry, added a $1.3 million ministries complex that Jerry and I had the opportunity to visit just yesterday. $1.3 million, six miles from downtown Harrison. West Rock, one of our major prime employers, last year, in 2018, added over $8.5 million of new equipment and investment and hired 30 employees. So forget that. This year, and we saw it in the crate, they're deploying a new piece of equipment that's going to raise the plant's capacity, and it's valued at $1.7 million. Be installed within the next two weeks. So that raises the numbers. And what does that say? Right there. Since January 1, over $87 million. We know there's a lot more out there. We think that's a great story for Harrison, and we intend to build on that. And speaking of building, in the home arena, nine new homes since January valued at almost $2 million. 16 homes remodeled at almost a half a million. Housing sales, 395 are currently listed, or as of September 28. The average list price is over a quarter of a million dollars. The average sale price on the 560 that have sold since January is $139,000. Look at the commercial listings. Sold 11 commercial buildings. Sold 11 commercial buildings, little, almost $200,000 in sales there. Agriculture. It's critical, those of you that were at our Economic Development Leadership Summit on Tuesday, heard the Secretary of Agriculture talk about the impact. Boone County has the largest economic impact of any county in the state of Arkansas with regard to agriculture. We got 1,303 farms in Boone County. That's a 2% growth from 2012, the last census. Total acreage is up 19%. The average acreage is up 16%. And here's the numbers that are important. Crop sales of 3.1 million and livestock sales of almost 161 million. This is Boone County only. Couple that with the investment of $87 million, you're looking at over $200 million in Boone County in seven months. I want to just highlight, and this will be part of it, some significant legislation that affects how we do business here. There are two issues that arose there. There were 96 bills that were passed that had business associated with them. These are two that I picked out along with the State Chamber President that I think impact what we're doing. One is the Opportunity Zone location that provides a tax incentive for folks who build inside an Opportunity Zone. These are long-range tax incentives. But for those futurists and those investors who are looking long-range, this is the, the largest tax benefit they've had in a number of years. Then the thing that everybody talked about this past year was the collection of out-of-state sales tax. This is the internet sales tax. Start, it, it was started, collection in August, I think, of this year, and Luke will probably get benefit of that anyway. So that's where we are with economic development. I'm honored to be part of the chamber that has had the board step up and make this change that you saw in our new mission statement. We just barely started. We don't even have all the pieces in place, yet we can identify in agriculture sales and investments, these are actual dollar investments in our communities here. I think we're doing pretty darn good. And that's without landing a single major industry. And as the Lieutenant Governor said Tuesday, and Mike Preston, the Secretary of Commerce, said, that's the long pole in the tent. If you land one in 10 years, you're lucky and you're in probably 1% of 1% of the communities that will ever do that. I'm happy to take care of our existing business. That's the key. Take care of this existing business and we can move forward. Are there any questions?
I'm gonna touch on how the Tuesday went and...
I know that Mary Jean's already timing me, but we had...
No, that's fine with us.
Right, here it is.
We were fortunate to have Lieutenant Governor Tim Griffin with us, as well as Secretary of Commerce Mike Preston, the Secretary of Agriculture Wes Ward, who spent the day with us. They toured West Rock and Wabash, saw the impact that those two businesses alone had on our economic well-being and prosperity here. We had a group of about 75 folks that joined for lunch, and those three gentlemen gave their impression of what Harrison and Boone County are all about. In the audience, we had six CEOs and senior business representatives that have no business in Boone County. Meaning, they have all the business they want here, but they don't have a physical being, presence in Boone County. I talked to two of those. And one's already received a call from Mike Preston, the Secretary of Commerce, and had no idea what we were doing in Harrison and Boone County. So it's a start. We want to do that on an annual basis. I've got the Lieutenant Governor willing to come back. He wants to meet with a small group, the latter part of October, 1st of November, and talk about workforce development. So I think we made an impact. So when Mike Preston travels overseas with the governor, with the Lieutenant Governor, and he wants to bring business to Arkansas, he now has his thumbnail on a community that is in fact working for its betterment.
Bob, that was one of the most, the best events I've ever attended.
Good. Thank you, sir.
It was a great job from, you know, we all loaded on a bus, went around town a little bit. I kinda thought that's who we were gonna be entertaining when we got back to the Duran Center. Well, we get back there and there's about 100 others waiting for us, so that was, that was fabulous. Good job.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, Mary Jean.
I'm done.
You didn't expect that, did you?
No. And, and I'm pleased. Thank you, Bob. And I really timed you. I didn't have a watch. We don't have anything else in the finance committee?
Okay. Bill?
No committee act.
Excellent. Chris, I think you have something. Am I missing someone?
You missed Linda.
I'm sorry. No?
No, I didn't have anything either, Jerry.
Tonight, we are, the only thing we have on the agenda is to amend one word to an ordinance, changing it from juvenile to adult. Pretty much a housekeeping thing, just to correct, make it line up with another ordinance. Is that correct, Jeff?
These are the minutes from August 22nd, and we just need to, they were approved in September, and we're told that we need to clarify, the word juvenile needs to be changed to adult. And while we're changing that, I would like to drop the word ordinance from the title that was in the minutes. We really, it was, it's an ordinance on the county side, but it's not an ordinance on the city side. And so the, in the discussion early on, it was called ordinance, but then Grant informed us it does not need to be an ordinance. It was just a simple up-down vote. So in next, in your next meeting, I would like you all to consider amending the August 22nd minutes by removing the word ordinance from the title and changing the word juvenile to adult.
I'll make that motion second.
So you'll have to...
Motion is second, to move it to council, right? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Yep. Good deal. Any old business at this time? Nothing? We have a proclamation we need to make, and I was asked if I would read this tonight, so if you all would please bear with me. And Gwen Hoffman, would you come up here, please? Alright. Since, there are over 140 local Chamber of Commerces operating in Arkansas. And whereas chambers of commerce in Arkansas work with businesses, nonprofits, banks, industry, and merchants to advance the civic, economic, professional, and cultural life of our state. And chambers of commerce in Arkansas foster the growth of existing businesses and encourage new businesses to locate in Arkansas, acting as a liaison between the business, community, education, and government. And whereas the state of Arkansas recognizes the contribution of local chambers of commerce to the civic and economic vitality of the state of Arkansas. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jerry Jackson, Mayor of the City of Harrison, Arkansas, do hereby proclaim Arkansas 14th to the 18th, 2019, as Chamber of Commerce Week. So, that we will present to you.
Thank you very much.
Your word. Alright. Oh, you know, we're about done, but we have one other thing. Emily, would you come to the microphone, please? I want to share with you folks, and I want to recognize Emily and all of her many volunteers. Last week, she put on...
No, we put on.
We put on, we put on an event on the, on the square that I haven't seen anything done that well in many, many years. And because of all my politicking, I've been on that, involved in that event for many, many years. But I made it a point to, I know the weather cooperated, but she did a lot of things that were a little out of the ordinary. I mean, of course, we had, you know, we had KY3 show up at the same night as Harvest Home Coming coming, and that was not planned, it just happened. So we got to see the inner workings of how KY3 performs when they're out of town at one of these things, and it was a little unusual, to say the least. But she put together a plan for routing traffic around Harrison Square, and I was told by the Harrison Police Department that it's gonna be a disaster. It was one of the best things we've ever done. She, and, and the reason was, she blocked Main Street, and that's what they don't like, but she had to do it for a couple of reasons. Safety mainly. But you had one lane open where the people went around the square, and there was a lot of people, so they had to go around fairly slow, and they were able to see the festivities. So it was, had to be cool. Had to be very impressive to them. I also made it a point to talk to a lot of vendors. All the vendors were happy that I talked to, and were all doing a lot more business than they expected. The music, I've got this Wes Whitaker guy from Valley Springs. He was out of this world.
He's great.
He was great. I had no idea. But, I mean, all in all, it was very positive. I didn't hear complaining. And Emily, I just want to thank you and all your volunteers. I kinda wanted to let the city council know what a great success that was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We already had a third of our vendors sign up for next year, so we already have over 20 vendors signed up for 2020. Nice. And I've talked to six of the businesses on the square, and they all said it's the busiest Harvest Home Coming weekend they've ever had. So that was good news for me.
So I don't know what we're gonna do with Crowded Days, but maybe you ought to have...
No, no. One and I'm done.
We need more festivals on the square. We definitely need more. We've got the most beautiful square in Arkansas, and we've got the ability, we've got the vendors that want to be here, so it sounds like we ought to have a lot more.
Yep.
So, thank you. Thank you.
Because your council meeting will fall on Thanksgiving. So something, nothing to decide tonight, but you'll need to discuss it at the October council meeting.
And, and I'd like to comment on that. I think we've got a lot going on right now. Win or lose in November, we're still gonna have a lot going on, so I'd like to meet twice if at all possible, but it's your call. Alright? Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn, got it.
Okay. We're done? Thank you.
I'm good at that one.
You are.
For a prize.
Oh, Jerry.
You can take all you want.
Wes?
Yeah, Wes?
Wes Whitaker lives in Harrison. He teaches in Valley.